All right, everybody is here and Ms. Trump is here. This is information, there is no board action required, but our new Auditor General wanted to have the opportunity to be able to show how she is re-crafting and reorganizing the staff, and we have asked for more robust audit opportunities. And again, the Audit Committee will be coming back to the Board for some additions to our audit plan because we purposely left room in our audit plan for more useful activities to make use of our enhanced audit staff. So, Ms. Trump, go ahead. And you're driving your -- yes, I think you're driving it as well, so...
We'll see how well I do with driving and texting at the same time.
And texting at the same time.
Driving and reading.
No texting over there.
Driving and reading. Well, first of all, thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to be here, both in terms of the new role that's been created as the Auditor General, but also being here tonight, this afternoon, to present to you the Auditor General Report, and what I hope will be one of periodic and regular report out to the Board. The Audit Committee has heard about the Change Management Program and at the request of the Audit Committee, which I hopefully influenced, but I think it's important for the Board to hear the entire Auditor General Report out. And again, it is information purposes only, but there are changes afoot in the Office of Auditor General. The first one, as you heard, is the name change. It is now the Office of Auditor General instead of the Internal Audit Office. And that was an easy but significant change. And again, what I'm about to present to you is information only, and the entire Audit Committee has seen this report. So again, thank you. A change management program was developed very early on, within the first couple of weeks, and the purpose of this program was really to identify the -- identify and manage the impact of change to the office and to ease the transition for the office and the staff. And it also is to be fully accountable to this Board and to the public through information sharing and transparency about the goals and the underlying strategies. So my vision for the Office of Auditor General is very similar to the vision for the entire division and includes components of opportunity, commitment, community achievement, accountability, and future. So where are we going? So I'm going to start off with what is the change? Enhanced internal audit capabilities that include providing advisory services to the School Board and division leadership, defined and repeatable systems and resources, transparent and clearly communicated internal audit strategies, objectives and value proposition, broader experience given to staff, and deliberate risk-based audit activities that integrate with strategy and performance. And in the slides that follow, we'll get a little more detail into this. My total presentation is about 10 to 15 minutes, so just to let you know, but of course, open to questions at the end. So I will spend a few minutes going over what each of these means. So the key message, the Auditor General is responsive to the School Board's call for independent and objective oversight and leads risk-based auditing activity that is in part aligned with FCPS strategic -- with the FCPS Strategic Plan. So independence allows the office to be free from undue influence. So that was a key component and continues to be a key message for our office. Objectivity, we commit, the internal auditors commit, to make a balanced assessment of all relevant circumstances and not be unduly influenced by bias or our own interest or by others. So coming into a big division, that is a key, a critical need for objectivity. And also evaluating risk exposures relating to the organization's governance, operations, and information systems. So we're looking at risk exposures to achieving the school divisions organizational goals, the strategic objectives, the reliability and integrity of financial and operational information, effectiveness and efficiency of operations and programs, compliance with laws and regulations, and safeguarding of assets. So there are five goals that we've laid out, that I have laid out as part of my vision. And the first goal is alignment of strategic plan and enterprise risk management. And again, this comes with a strategy. Second goal is continuous improvement of audit activity, and I'll get into this, each of these. Third goal is high-performing audit team. Fourth goal is strategic use of technology. And the fifth goal is the enhanced effectiveness through communication. Some of these seem very intuitive, but we've done a lot in the last, I think I've been here eight weeks, and there were a lot of opportunities, and there are still some more. So the first goal I'm going to talk to you about is tell you a little bit about Goal One, Strategic Plan and Enterprise Risk Management. There's two strategies. And as you'll notice, I've set these up to look a lot like Ignite with the color coding and the status, and also goals and strategies. I thought since you, the School Board was used to that, this would be an easier way for us to present our goals and strategies. So ERM, Enterprise Risk Management, I think you've all heard that in your work, and a couple of years ago with the Enterprise Risk Assessment Survey, and ERA is Enterprise Risk Assessment. So I just wanted to lay that out front, upfront, the terminology, ERM and ERA. So the, over the last few years, or it's been about a decade, it's been a very fast-moving but slow implementation train for a lot of organizations to implement ERM. And it's become recognized as a way to manage risks that are essential part of good governance. So there's a lot of pressure for a lot of organizations to identify all the risks they face and how they're going to manage those risks in order to achieve the strategic goals. And what I've heard from the School Board is that that particular wish is no different here. How do we manage our risks and align those with meeting the strategic goals of the organization? As you can see, the first strategy up there has a completion timeline of TBD. And what this means to us, where Karen and I have had a couple of meetings, and it's really important at this point for us to communicate that we are working together, but it's really in its infancy, both here at the School Board and even in other school districts. There have been, in the limited research I've done, there've been very few school districts who have implemented or even, much less executed, enterprise risk management. And Karen did some research too independently, she couldn't find any. So for us, as a School Board and as a division, I just wanted to make sure that we understood that there is an opportunity for us, as part of the maturity and the growth, to do some training and awareness. And again, I'm going to ask Karen if she has anything to add to this, but again, it's really just an opportunity for us as part of the planning process. So we don't have a timeline, but the average timeline for implementation of ERM in corporate organizations is three to five years.
Okay, Dr. Garza.
Yes, thank you. And I just want to say, you all did really well in hiring our Auditor General. I've been very impressed with you, Goli, and very glad that you're part of our organization. And I really appreciate the way in which you've been very collaborative in kind of figuring this out. One of the first times Goli and I met, she brought up enterprise risk management, so I just took it upon myself to kind of start doing some research because it's a new learning for me. And so I've, she's an expert, I'm just, you know, learning about it. I've read quite a bit about it. It is a new and novel even approach, even in business and industry, I think, except probably for the finance, a lot of our finance enterprise and corporations. It is very novel for public school systems. In fact, I could not find one school system that had anything in writing. So I'm not suggesting we don't need to go that way. I think there's a lot we can learn from it. I just want to make sure that we all have a common understanding of what it is and what it could look like for our school system. And so that's all I've shared with Goli is, I think we probably need to all kind of learn, I mean, me, maybe I just need to speak about me. I'm still learning about it, and I'm not quite, I see the correlations and the potential benefit to public school systems. I just think we need to spend a little time kind of contemplating and figuring that out first, because really, no one's even kind of set the stage out there, kind of shown us what it could look like. And so, thank you, Goli, for letting me kind of weigh in there.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you, Dr. Garza. So I think the second strategy, kind of segueing from what we just said, one of, a mature internal audit shop will do risk-based audit planning. There, it's an iterative process, and there is an opportunity for us to do some level of risk-based audit planning. The full spectrum and the full maturity of risk-based audit planning won't be developed until we really do look at how to integrate strategic goals with enterprise risk management. But the intent right now, what we've, what I've been working with, with my staff, is developing an audit universe. So currently, the audit plan is developed through taking input from stakeholders and management, stakeholders being the Board. And there hasn't been a disciplined and rigorous approach to what should our annual audit plan be. And as Ms. Strauss pointed out, the audit plan this year may change based on some risk-based audit planning. So we're in the process of developing the audit universe here in my office. There's going to be a collaborative approach with both leadership team and this Board in terms of the audit universe. And then through some deliberate approach, we will narrow that field down, because as you can imagine, the audit universe is pretty large. So we start with the kitchen sink, and then we start pulling things out of it. Again, by February at a minimum, we'd like to look at, my intent is to have some revised audit plan for FY '16 based on some risks that we will identify. And then for the FY '17 audit plan, do much of the same. So Goal Two is continuous improvement for the audit team and the audit office. So, and audit activity, I'm sorry. So there's three strategies up there. Drive risk-based audit engagements, which looks a little like risk-based audit planning, but it's a little bit different, and I'll explain that in one second. Documented directives, policies, and procedures, and quality review process. The risk-based audit engagements, we, I've actually implemented some risk ranking criteria. And in our Audit Committee meetings, the very first two, I stayed relatively silent. But I had an opportunity at the third one, when we talked about the local school activity funds, to talk, to present the report in a risk-based manner. In other words, what does the Audit Committee, and hence the Board, need to focus on? What were the key risks identified, and where should the focus of the Board be? And that is a practice and a methodology that my staff had not employed prior, in prior audit reports, and that it is something that you're going to see going forward. So by the time the audit report gets to the Audit Committee and eventually to the Board, you'll have key risks identified. And we're using the same risk ranking that you saw again in the risk assessment, low, medium, high. And we don't have to overcomplicate it, it doesn't have to be low, medium, medium-low. We'll keep it simple. But in some cases, you know, we may have 10 findings, but only one high risk. And so even if it, even if they're a medium risk, but we still think, I still think that it should be something that may be worthy of your attention, we'll bring those up. So we have implemented that, and also in doing so, we're using a risk approach to defining the scope, the timing, and the procedures of the audit. In other words, we're not going to boil the ocean. We're going to be very deliberate about what the key risks are to the objectives in each one of our engagements. So documented directives, policies, and procedures. You know, one of, one of the primary functions of internal audit is to look at governance practices and see how the business, the organization promotes ethics awareness, ethics awareness and values. And so I don't have to do an audit to do that. What I have found is an opportunity for improvement in some of our directives, and the Audit Committee saw in our last Audit Committee meeting, I will be coming forth, I'm working again collaboratively with Dr. Garza, coming forth with some recommendations to the Audit Committee for some enhanced policies around ethics, fraud, waste, and abuse, some improvements in investigations. These are things that, again, I'm collaborating with the division, but we're falling, we're a little bit behind in even what the state does in some of these directives. So again, no need to do an audit around this, but definitely an opportunity for improvement. And then a quality review process, an internal quality review process. Again, here, my staff needs a methodical process for how we do, how we perform high-performing and quality work. Okay? That one is basically a methodology that many audit shops use, and we just haven't yet. So we're doing some work around that. Goal Three, high-performing audit team. So I've got a lot of talented team members, not a lot, what do I have, five? But we do have two open positions. So one of the things that we're doing that has not been done is develop office metrics and then benchmark and doing comparative analysis. And that's really important, just like we measure the compensation study. You start with a baseline, then you figure out where you want to be, develop the metrics, but what's the benchmark, and then you grow from there. I think it's really critical that we do that in OAG, in the Office of Auditor General, because we are such a large division, and we have not been able to find any data yet, but we're going to be creating some data and doing some surveys with other school divisions so we can develop a baseline. And I think that gives us more transparency and visibility about how we're spending the money in our budget, but also what we're, how effective we are as an office. Our professional development, we changed the job descriptions. I changed the job descriptions for all my staff, and the key changes were to ensure that all the staff are responsible for risk-based auditing, but also all types of audits, performance, operational, compliance, and financial. There was a bifurcation, some of my staff was just responsible for financial, and some were just responsible for performance, some for risk, some for not. That's gone away, so we're growing wide, we're growing deep. So that's, again, a movement in the right direction for the talent we have. I do have job, two job openings for auditor positions, and I am looking for people with data analytics skills, because I can't be the only one in the office who has data analytics skills, so, and I can train to it, but I really need somebody who can come in and do that. And IT, because that's another area of growing top 10 risks and profit, not-for-profit. So just to let you know that. Improving team collaboration through team building. So for us to be an effective team, we do need to do some team building. Immediately, I started having one-on-ones, I have weekly team meetings with the support of the Superintendent's Office. We've expanded our existing space by adding a conference room, so we have team meetings in there. We identified and prioritized six components of an effective team, and we've implemented some activities to build around those components. So we're really excited, we're starting to act and feel more like a team. Strategic use of technology, Goal Four, you would, we have a lot of technology that is at our disposal in the division that we haven't used yet, and we are starting to employ the local school activity funds audit reports. We're historically given out by paper copy, 48 spiral-bound copies. I have seven years of audit reports and files in my office, not my office, but in the suite. Those are all going to be warehoused. I've been working with IT, document retention, Mary Beth is here, I'm looking at her. The document retention policy has been updated for us. I also am using the current system, point systems that we have, such as Blackboard and SharePoint, in order to house, warehouse, and store, and record a lot of our audit paperwork. So existing systems. However, we do not have electronic work papers. All of our audits are done without electronic work papers. We're two decades behind in that. So there will be a software solution, we are looking at that right now. We're interviewing vendors, we're working with procurement, we're working with IT to identify a vendor and hopefully implement and execute a software by the end of this fiscal year. So our summer audit will be a little more efficient, and it'll create efficiencies such as, like I said, a repeatable system, but corrective action plans that can be automatically followed up on. It's really going to improve some of the efficiency for us. And the last goal here is communications. We're going to, we have an internal communication strategy and an external communication strategy. Been working with the Communications Department, I'm, I think Mr. Gelfoyle is back there, Mr. Torre was back there earlier, but how can we use the existing messaging systems to get out a message about who we are, who is the Auditor General, what do we do in our office? We have a list of key messages we want to get out internally and then externally to the community. We do get out to the community for the local school activity funds, but how else can we get out there? We have, we control the fraud, waste, and abuse hotline. We take messages, and then we dictate what they say. But are there systems in place, such as the School Board has systems for logging it, some messages, when you get messages from the citizens? Can we repeat some of those systems for our own fraud, waste, and abuse hotline? Again, looking for efficiencies through communication. And this is the conclusion. What will it look like when we are complete? Advice and assurance on strategic risks with opportunity to focus on the highest risks. I talked a little bit about that with risk-based auditing. A rigorous, disciplined approach to annual audit plan. Transparent and mature audit strategies. Why are we auditing? What's the relevance? What will it help? And risk criteria that includes efficiency, economy, and effectiveness. Controls, compliance, and prospective analysis, not just looking in the rearview mirror, but really looking ahead at emerging risks and anything that's pervasive. And then an audit team that is high, is high-performing with clear, concise, and credible reporting. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Trump. And before we go to questions, one of our other Audit Committee, our citizen representative is here, Mr. Ned Holland. Thank you very much. In fact, I think he's been here all day. Whoa. Thank you, Ned. Okay, so far I have two, two folks that have some questions, Ms. Schultz and then Ms. Heinz. Ms. Schultz?
So first, can I ask you a question about, you said on the software, on the data management and document system, I'm assuming you're talking about COTS product, so we're not going to do any in-house development?
Correct. There is enough out there that we can choose from.
There's enough out there that, and that will, I would imagine, would actually turn into, you know, an efficiency, if you will, and actually save time so that there's less time spent managing documents and more time available to audit.
Perfect.
Okay. And then two, I want to revisit, and I'm not going to correct per se, it's more confirm. When you say data analytics, I mean, I'm assuming that there are some people in the office that could do data analytics, but can you maybe expand a little bit on what you're looking for? Because a number of us over the years have been talking about the difference between data and meaningful data. And the ability for data analysis to yield something. So can you just tell us a little bit about, or expand a little bit about, on that?
Well, it's almost a continuum, and thank you for this question, but I, first I need somebody with critical thinking skills who knows to ask the right questions. And once you ask the right questions, then you can data mine. And that comes from the richness of someone who's done enough data analytics, of course. And then it's the quality of the reports that you get so that they are meaningful. If the data there is garbage in, garbage out, then they still won't be meaningful. And I don't know, to be fair, the quality of the data that's available to us in the system. I know that having seen three audit reports so far, there is opportunity for improved data in those audit reports that we've seen. When we ask the questions, the answers aren't always available. But we can't change that necessarily. Our recommendations might be, to your point, there's a need for this type of data. And I talk, talk about that in terms of information governance, and I don't know how many have heard that terminology. But again, it's asking the right questions. If, if the data's not available, what other questions can we ask?
And you're also talking about when you go in and do a, an audit, I'm assuming you are not going in and taking a paper report from part of the organization and just reviewing the paper report. You're talking about going in and getting raw data, extracting raw data, and then doing the analysis on the raw data.
If it's available, correct. If it is available.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Ms. Heinz?
Thank you. I just wanted to thank you. I think if anybody was wondering whether we needed you, clearly you've cleared that up in the last 20 minutes, so that's great. I think it sounds like, my, my question, I realize, is the question, which is kind of like, how is risk-based auditing different from what we've been doing? What does it look like in a school system? And so that's the big question, and I'm not going to ask you to answer right now, because it sounds like we're going to spend some time figuring that out ourselves. So you'll be, I guess we'll be breaking a little bit of new ground, it sounds like, on how you implement that kind of auditing in a school system. And the, you know, some of the questions for me are, for example, when you look at, and you and I have talked about this a little bit, when we look at outcomes, because that has to be part of any audit, right, I think, is when, when our major, most important outcomes are student outcomes, you know, how do we fit that into the audit framework and, you know? So anyway, I, to me, that's part of the conversation that we have to have. But I, so if you wanted to speak a little bit more to that or not, I think it is a big conversation we're all going to have to have together. But I, you know, I'm excited that we're going to be maybe breaking some new ground. I appreciate the work you've already done, and I also appreciate that you're coming to communicate with us. I think it's really nice because, you know, the Audit Committee is a very important committee, but it's also important that all of us, I think, hear from you. You're an important part of our team, so thank you for being here today.
Thank you, Ms. Heinz, I appreciate that. And as you said, there'll be future discussions that will really help all of us as we go down this maturity path for risk-based auditing. But, you know, a lot of the times, the word "risk" is used as a bomb, it's thrown into a room, and then you go, "So what?" So when you do more risk-based auditing, you look at likelihood and impact in order to determine the severity of the risks and whether there is enough evidence to say that it needs to provide, audit needs to provide assurances. So you don't just say, "There's a risk to this, there's a risk to cost, it's a high cost," or "There's a risk to efficiency." But it's really, what does it look like on the larger scale in terms of all the other risks that the School Board has to pay attention to, before you really start putting resources to it. So that's what we'll talk about as we, as we talk about risk-based auditing. And again, iteratively, we'll be able to implement some almost sophomoric steps, but down the road, when we do consider the alignment of ERM and strategic plan and assurance, then we'll be looking at some of those bigger things like likelihood and impact.
Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Velkov? Oh, and, okay, Ms. Reed.
Mrs. Strauss, I'm going to make a quip. I'm just wondering how long it's going to take for somebody out there to say, she's not really independent, she just says whatever the School Board wants her to say. Mr. Becerra, you can track that for me.
Well, the audit plan is settled on by the entire School Board, we can't get around that. Ms. Reed?
Well, I don't know if you noticed, but I took a picture of you as you started your presentation. This is a momentous occasion. It's great to see you in the flesh. Many of us have talked about the need for your position for years, literally, myself, six years. And, and so I have great pride, as I do in all my colleagues, for having the foresight and the tenacity to wait for just the right person, and I am certain that we have found her. I like very much the direction that you're heading, and really, everything that you've said, you're just really, I think, going to make a huge difference for the school system. And I just want you to know that I'll be watching and cheering you on as I, as I join the member of the public community here, along with Mr. Velkov here in just a few weeks. So good luck to you, and thank you so much for, for being here and helping us out.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate that support. Thank you. And any other, yes, Ms. McLaughlin?
I not only want to echo Ms. Reed so eloquently stated, you know, one of my passions when I first joined the Audit Committee a few years ago was to be doing searches on some of our nation's largest school systems, where they did have an Office of the Inspector General, Auditor General. And to see us now join the ranks of some of the largest school systems is very exciting. And I want to share something that I've said in Audit Committee on a number of occasions. We are also here because of Dr. Garza. In the work that I did with her on the audit team, when we would, the Audit Committee, we would talk about, you know, what would FCPS look like with an Inspector General and Auditor General? She was fully embracing and talked about her time seeing it at HoustonIST, and really very open-minded about it. And her predecessor had a very different... And her predecessor had a very different position on it altogether. And I think that you very much, Dr. Garza, enabled this board to find its way to really creating an auditor general's office that surpasses what the board supervisors have. And so I take great pride in the fact that we can keep saying that until Dan and Kathy hopefully bring some influence there, because we are not just one of the largest, but one of the wealthiest jurisdictions in the country. And we have a responsibility to continue, and this goes to the vein of all of today's work session, I know Dr. Garza is committed to ensuring that this is the most successful school system that we can have in the country, and that she wants to safeguard every dollar we have. But by having Goli in charge of this new position, you will enable us to provide that verification. You will enable us to be able to demonstrate with a very independent role what many of us know, and what Dr. Garza has been wanting the community and the board supervisors to understand. But that is what's so essential about your independent position. And so I'm very excited about the energy you've brought to this position already. I do believe that your subject matter expertise and your experiences outside before joining us will be very beneficial. And I'm excited also about our two community members who've joined the audit committee, who will also bring their tremendous experience. Ms. Reed, I hope you will be watching us and seeing the progress, and take great pride in knowing that you are a driving force of this.
Thank you very much, and for the support.
Okay. Seeing, no further questions. Thank you very much, Ms. Trump. And we do have an audit committee meeting on December 16th.
November 16th.
Yes, and hopefully we will have two audit reports, and I believe part of, part of the presentation of those reports is that you will be, you will be presenting the findings through a risk-based lens, so that we will, for the first time, see what is important, what's not important, what we should focus on and not. So we'll be very anxious to see how that's presented.
Great. Thank you, everyone.
Okay. Great, thank you very much. And with that, we are finished, and I guess we, are we finished with the work session? We are adjourned. All right, great. Thank you very much.